Everybody ready?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, six o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. Everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm not trying to crowd you.
No worries.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I will approve the agenda for the...
We got a motion, do I have a second?
A second motion.
Any discussion, anything somebody wants to add to before we... Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, all items under consent agenda will be approved with one motion unless someone wants to take something off to review.
A motion to approve the agenda minus item G.
Okay, have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus G. Do I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, none. Consent agenda is passed, except item G, Jason?
Uh, I just had a quick question, um, I just want to make sure I was reading this correctly. Uh, the golf course, is that year, the yearly loss, or is that the year-to-date loss?
That's not a, any loss, that's, it's cash balance.
Okay.
So the fund six thirteen is at a negative one thirty-seven.
Okay, that's what I was...
Yep.
Going for clarification.
And, and the only reason it's dropping right now is because annual bond payments were made in the February meeting, so those were paid, and we have no revenues yet for compensating that.
Okay, awesome, thank you so much.
Yep, you're welcome.
It's the only question I have.
Alright.
So they need me to pass to you?
Yep.
A motion to accept, uh, item G in the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none, passes. Forward. Nobody for the forum. Just like that, we're on to number five if Christina's caught up.
Oh.
That's you, Mike.
Oh, it's me, huh? Um, not really a whole lot, I took Sander out of the pickup today.
Oh.
Not gonna snow anymore. Done with it.
There goes that, Jinx.
You know, hoping that, uh, everything dries up nicely, I know we obviously got some winter time left here, but this little bit of nice weather has allowed us to get out to, uh, wastewater irrigation field and do some cleanup around the edge to that with the new machinery we have, and that's going well. I don't have a whole lot to report when it's this time of year, it's really kind of just little maintenance stuff here and there, getting things taken care of.
How's the three ponds looking?
Polished.
Excited.
Uh, you know, we went into winter sitting pretty good, not overfull. The lack of snow obviously is gonna help us quite a bit, depending on whether we have a, a dry spring or a wet spring. Either way, I think we went in sitting really well, so we should be doing just fine.
Awesome, thank you.
Any other questions for Mike? Fourth Street's about the best it's looked in a long time, I don't know if it's just this winter or...
It's just, yeah, the winter, the snow, you know, the lack of snow, getting everything off of it.
Yeah.
We'll see.
Frost just now, it's really come out.
We're, we're not having the frost yet, everybody's a little...
Once it starts really coming out, that could change over there.
Alright. Shonda? To the liquor store.
Yeah, we don't, uh... We don't have a lot to report, um... Just... Our opening time is eleven, we've left it up to bartenders during the week, if they wanna stay open until eleven or shut down at ten, if there's nobody in there, um...
During the week?
During the week, yeah. Just kind of, at your discretion, Friday and Saturday nights, obviously, we are definitely open, but Thursday nights, there's no people in there. But, so, yeah, I mean... Sales are good, and despite what it looks like, I'm, uh, income statement?
We know. We can see the, uh...
The architect bees are starting to come out.
Yeah, someone come out too.
Yeah, there's, there's about forty-one thousand dollars for those, and then the heaters and... I kind of calculated that, uh... About fifteen thousand dollars from lots of COVID year-to-date, and just, just the hours that were not allowed to be open. Just, and like, for, when we first opened up, people were a little wary, that kind of thing, so... We would be, we'd be up some percentage, um, obviously, food sales are going really well.
Yeah, can't stop them.
We've got a nice, we've got a nice margin on them, so that means that we're pricing it right, um, and just... The, um... That just tells you that when, when we remodel, that this guy's one...
That is really good to hear.
Yeah, if you look at the off-sale numbers...
Yep.
Year-to-date.
Right, well, I mean, people, obviously, are taking it home, and what COVID changed for us dramatically was people had no clue that we really did want for takeout, and now it's twenty-five percent of our sales.
Yeah.
So, really has changed what people buy. It's alright, alright with us.
Not much. Twenty-five percent.
Yep. Full food sales, twenty-five percent of food sales are, yeah.
Wow.
Which, well, and that does reflect, so if you looked at, if you look at the food sales, sales, and then the on-sale liquor and beer sales...
Yeah.
Um... That's, that's an indication that they're not coming in and eating, yeah, they're not sitting there and eating. And when they do come in and eat, it's, you know, non-alcoholic beverages. But...
I mean, when you look at the numbers from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one, first, you know, it... Wow.
Well, and also the, let me put, how to put this way? The hours that we sell a lot of beer and liquor are not between seven and ten, it's between eleven and one.
Oh.
Is where, do you know what I'm saying?
Yep.
Because those people are coming in to drink, not eating.
Right. Their timeframes change.
Well, yeah, and then you don't have those hours, people. But if they keep it like this, it'll change, people will start drinking at five o'clock, or six o'clock, and make a night of it.
We work earlier.
We work earlier, right? Start working half-days, I don't know. Yep, that's all I got.
Anything else for the liquor store? Thank you. I see Jason's not present.
No.
He give you anything?
No.
How about Brian?
Just, just what was in the consent agenda, that update on the policy.
Policy.
Uh, I don't have anything from Brian, um, I can tell the council that the SCBA's have been ordered, and I think he noted that the last time he was here, um, the radios have been ordered, delivered, and installed, so he's working towards that, and, uh, he's very cautious that we're gonna have a lot more fires because of the weather, the, he already signed, um, the, you know, grass is gonna dry out quick and fluff up quick, and it's gonna catch fire quicker, so he's like, everybody's all hands on deck from what he told me on Friday, so...
Good.
They'll be ready. Which isn't a good thing, don't want to talk about fires.
No. And the golf course, we saw the consent agenda.
Okay.
And I thought Kelly was gonna be in on this one, but apparently no.
Uh, I think she is only planning on attending that one on the sixteenth that you guys decided to do, so...
Sixteenth or fourth?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth.
It's a Tuesday. It's gonna be a hybrid, Nick, and the reason I sent that out to all of you that wanted to attend is because some of the friends of the library, the Black Duck Library, requested having some in Zoom and some in person, um, for their own safety, so if there's a chance that, you know, like yourself or Max or anyone else that couldn't come that day, you've got that opportunity then, but I think majority of everybody will be present that night.
And that would be great for everybody to get to meet each other and figure out what we can do best.
Yeah.
So we'll wait for Kelly then, that's probably more important. Christina? On to you already.
Okay, um, well, a couple of action items for the council, and then I have a couple of talking points and reminders. So the first, um, first point A is a revisit to Resolution twenty-one oh-six, um, taking action on the detachment request from Joel Wilhelmie, uh, I've not changed anything else in the resolution, Max, except for, of course, the date, so, um, you guys can have this. Do what you wish with it.
Can I get a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-one zero-six?
I'll make a motion to approve. Uh, Resolution twenty-two-one six?
A second to motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Any discussion? How you feeling, Nick?
I was gonna leave the Congress that way anyway, so...
To approve?
Yeah.
Do you want to move forward with your roll call then?
We can move forward, I, I want to roll call vote, yeah.
Unless I'm stepping and there's more action or discussion, I'm gonna want to push you guys through this.
I, Sheldon?
I understand what I'm saying.
But no questions?
Yeah, if there's something...
To me, it's just, we let it go through the way it's gonna go through, somebody along, longer on, long way, will take advantage of it, I feel.
Jason, anything?
Um, I'm just gonna go off the, uh, the advice from our lawyer and the way that he said that we should continue with this.
Okay. My guess, when Christina, if you'll take your role?
Yep, I will start at the end of the table. Counselor Sykes, how do you vote? And Counselor Osland, how do you vote? Counselor Cole, how do you vote?
Yay.
And Mayor Goulet, how do you vote?
Aye.
Max, you have a vote of three to one?
So we have a vote of three to one, the motion passes. Thank you, everyone, for your due diligence on that one.
Anything else on that, anyone move forward?
You can keep going.
Okay. Um, Resolution twenty-one oh-eight, uh, was discussed at the work session, this is the updated resolution, declaring the sufficiency of the petition from Matt's Barbie to vacate the remaining section of your Russell Drive that was not vacated on January thirteenth after the public hearing, and then ordering another public hearing to approve this request, petition, petition, sorry. I would suggest that if council was going to approve the Resolution Max, that you call the public hearing to be on the April, counseling them to make it for ease and timing, so they can get it out to the landowners.
That's on the April?
Would be the fifth.
Well, can, uh, anybody want to move that one?
I'll second.
Jason, one second?
Twenty-two-one dash eight, requesting, uh, the resolution for declaring the, uh, public hearing? Or just the, uh, vacate?
Yeah, to find the sufficiency and setting up public hearing to vacate.
Okay. We have a motion in a second, any discussion?
Hope we don't have to do this again.
Anybody else? Nothing on that? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, or none, passes. So then we will set the public hearing for April fifth.
Send open on patience. Uh, letter C is approval needed on Resolution twenty-one, twenty-two-one oh-nine, is a resolution to appoint election judges for the twenty-one municipal election, hopefully we only have to do one. So I need a, this approved, please.
I'll approve the resolution for twenty-two-one oh-nine, resolution for judges?
I'll second the motion.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, or none, passes.
Uh, letter D is the annual liability coverage waiver for the lead of Minnesota City's Insurance Trust. Each year, municipalities, um, vote to either waive or not waive the monetary limits on their municipal tort liability, which is like two million dollars, so, uh, typically, the city of Black Duck always waives the limits, and I'm looking for a motion to approve the waiver next.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve the liability coverage waiver form?
I motion to approve the liability coverage waiver form.
Thanks, Nick.
Second.
Thank you, Sheldon. We have a motion and a second, uh, any discussion on it, guys? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? That is approved.
Okay. Uh, letter E, I am requesting formal counsel and city support to request to the Commissioners of Public Safety to, um, have an office of lim, of a deputy registrar here at City Hall. Um, I drafted a letter that I would submit to the Commissioners, um, and that would end up being a limited driver and vehicle services, um, office, uh, I've attached the statutes, and we actually fit within the parameters of the statutes, um, in speaking with the local, uh, regional representative. The other documents that I submitted to council for review is a proposed service area. Um, one of the things the statute requires is that the office has to serve a minimum of four thousand people, and the, um, support person gave me, you know, this map, which basically covers a fairly large area between the townships and the cities that it encompasses, by the two thousand nineteen census, it looks like it could encompass almost fourteen thousand people, so it is a very, very strong argument for the city, or for the state to allow us to do so here at City Hall. Side note, I also contacted a clerk colleague of mine at the city of Castle Lake, they've had a, uh, the same type of deputy registrar in their city hall for, I wanna say since two thousand three, and they don't staff, um, any more than herself and her deputy clerk, um, they keep their regular office hours, seven-thirty to three-thirty is their hours Monday through Friday, um, the only thing they do differently is if they have a title transfer they have to do, they stop those at like three o'clock in the afternoon, because they typically take longer, but just for perspective in fees... In November of two thousand twenty, the city of Castle Lake took in forty thousand dollars in fees revenue. Their first year in two thousand three, they revenueed seventeen thousand dollars. Um, my conversations with, um, uh... The county, they fully support it, um, they strongly urge the city that if, um, once they, we do get up and running, if this does get approved, that the city consider hiring somebody else, though, which has kind of been my thought all along, but we'll have to see how much it takes, but the, the requirements for inside the building are fairly, fairly simple, and we already provide everything they already have, so basically what I'm asking for tonight is, is the city's backing to move forward with the request, um, I think this would be an enormous service to this community, and really would serve a fairly large area.
I think you were going to start drawing people from Bemidji coming up here.
Definitely, you know, boy in the line.
Well, the, yeah, from Ten Strike, you know what I mean, even just Ten Strikes out.
Exactly, I mean, that, you're doing that, um, Ms. Paul does it. And I've heard that they want, they want to close up, but even if they didn't, the service, the service area is still huge.
I think this is...
There's enough for both.
There's enough for both without taking away from another office, and that's one of the things the Commissioners have to, uh, confirm, is that it doesn't take away too much from a, a certain level from, uh, Bemidji and anyone else within that area, and I don't see that happening.
Well, then I would move, I move that we approve the...
The accessibility though, like wheelchair accessible.
Back door.
Do we, do we have that back there?
We do, and that door's getting replaced and, and updated too, with some of the things we've done at City Hall anyway, Sheldon, so it'll make it more accessible.
Well, since we're gonna meet those requirements, and I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. There's your approval.
Emily, I'll send it in tomorrow. Uh, letter F, um, is just for informational purposes, it has stuck it under Shonda, but I think this instead. Um, it's just easier, uh, the, the formal bidding for the liquor store, uh, project was publicized in the paper this past Saturday, um, there is a, um, a required bid meeting locate, uh, going to be at, at the pond on Thursday at two, and Stephen will be there to, to take care of that. Oh, they changed it, it's at City Hall. Nope, no, it's not, site visit information, I'm sorry, pre-bid meeting, two PM, two twenty-four road, Frontis Road.
It's not really, it's not required, if they wanted to, if they wanted to go off of their drawings...
That's correct.
They could just bid off the drawings, but they're giving them an opportunity to ask questions, if they want to bid, come down, take a look at everything.
It says mandatory pre-bid meeting.
Yeah, I don't, that's not, well, maybe wording is...
Right.
Different in the...
There's contact information here too for, uh, Stephen, so if there's any questions, if anybody bumps a question to you, just...
Yeah, that was...
They're handling the bidding.
They're handling it, yes, it's just everything will be submitted to City Hall, and then, um, on the first of April will be the opening date, and then the April fifth meeting, regular meeting, will be the approval of those bid, of that bid at that time.
Okay.
The opening, whatever, that's on, at City Hall.
Yeah, that's here. Yep. Um, the other point I wanted to make was, um, I included a schedule of events from Lers in regards to, um, this whole process for the liquor store, and this is, this timeline is basically for the tax abatement bonds in order to fund the project, so I'm working on that, at the same time the bidding process is working too, so hopefully everything will coincide itself correctly, so... I'm crossing my fingers for low bids.
So we're opening, they can start bidding now?
Yep.
Bids close on the first.
Correct.
They have to be here.
They have to be here.
On the first.
Yep, um...
Just in case somebody asks me, I just want to make sure.
Oh, you're right, that's...
Yep, I do believe, Shonda, I gave you guys a copy of this one, right? Which was basically what was in the paper.
Right, yes.
And I emailed it to you guys.
Yeah, I just wanted clarification on, well, yeah, when I read the, what the rules were.
Yep. Have you had anyone discussing or asking any questions yet, okay? Any questions for me?
I was gonna ask, how many papers did we put it in, just the local?
Uh, we were only required to do the American, um, I went back and forth with, uh, folks at the Pioneer about putting it in the byline, but they don't do legals in the byline, because it's a free publication. Um, then I asked, well, what's the cost for the Pioneer, um, put it this way, it's seven dollars a column for the American, it's twelve dollars a column at the Pioneer, so the cost would almost double. Um, so it wasn't required to go anywhere else, um, but it's also on Withcess, um, website too, and a lot of...
Contractors.
Large contractors seek out those engineering firms when bids start opening up, so the only requirement the city is, um, statutorily required to do is to put it in our designated paper. If somebody finds it someplace else, it'll be it.
Um... Didn't Stephen, didn't Stephen say that he wanted us to bid these together for a lower cost?
Yes, and, uh, after our work session, I had another meeting with them, and the timeline on the USDA funding is probably two to three weeks behind the liquor store, so, uh, and the advice of Todd Higgin and Stephen, it made more sense to start working on the liquor store, so that way their timeline isn't slowed down. Hopefully, we get the same contractor.
So is that like a, a bug they put in their ear when they're bidding?
Well, I'm just worried if, that we're gonna get hit with two, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Two...
Mobilizations.
Mobilization.
I, I am too, Jason, and I agree with you, um...
Because that's huge.
It, it will be huge, it's just, it really depends on when, so I think of it this way, frost isn't gonna come out of the ground in a different timeline, so you really can't, you know, put footings in one time and then the other, I mean, maybe... One time and then the other, I mean, maybe by the time it's time to put footings in that, that contractor that gets the bid for the pond. The bidding will already be done for the public works.
Yeah, that's what I was afraid of, because then it would be a separate bid and a separate mobilization fee.
And I think some of the stuff has, some of those things have to be separate, but. I'm, I'm going under the advice of those, those experts.
I, I totally get it, I just like, I, I could be wrong, but the last one that we had was like thirty thousand dollars for the mobilization.
Yeah, it's not, it's not cheap.
That was for.
That was for like the tarring.
The tarring.
Yeah.
Same people that do this, obviously will be able to put their big hole on the next project knowing that they're in county have more resources, we're hoping that.
You would hope so.
Yeah, well, that, the work that's in the pond and the work that's out there is different, this is remodel, that's you. Right, so you, there's things that they can have, there are people doing in the pond.
Before the addition.
In between. If it's already got bad weather here, you can go to the pond.
Yeah, and it's, it's not really a secret right now that the city has been working on planning this project, I've been getting feedback from other contractors, Coach Anderson and a couple other ones that are asking, are we doing this? This is really going forward, so the, the people out there that bid on these types of projects, they're just waiting for the time to bite on it.
I, I was actually asked if we were changing the name to the lake since it's getting bigger. Yeah, that's what I did too, yeah.
I love them chairs.
What is.
Yeah, somebody sabotaged me.
But it's not even April first. You alright?
Oh my god. And we got you on camera, so.
Yeah. You stood up too quick.
I didn't even stand up, I leaned back.
That broke, it looks like. Well, you know, I wanted to get you guys some new chairs too.
Sure, you're, you're okay.
We're gonna send that one into America's Funniest Videos now. But at least you're not a kitten, you know?
I thought it was kinda rocky at first.
I'm glad you just didn't like hang onto the table, the table got with you. Excuse me, um. Sorry, does anybody else have any other questions about the liquor store?
No, I think we've covered it.
Yes.
We're moving along, there's nothing we can do till we know what she's gonna cost, that's what we're gonna know.
I know. Alright. Can I move on?
Yep.
Okay, um, the last thing I have is, uh, just a letter that I received from United States Department of Commerce for the twenty twenty census, I thought I'd share with the city. Um, the city did exceed its, um, self-response rate of sixty nine point eight percent, so yay. It's too bad it's not a hundred, but it was a lot lower. Midsummer, it was like thirty percent, maybe even less.
I just find it crazy that it's even that low, seventy percent.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of factors that happened in the census last year despite COVID. One of the largest reasons was we as a city have an enormous amount of P O boxes. And the, the way the census works is a lot of them go to physical addresses, they don't go to P O boxes. And then when the second round happened, not the mailing portion, but the second round happened. There was a very large amount of those. Blank census request. Ones stuck at the post office and then just kind of. Thrown in a, in a pile, so a lot of people didn't even turn them back in, um. You know, the, our, our previous county admin worked to, you know, push that self-response rate higher by, um. Sending out other types of flyers to specific people that have P O boxes, reminding them to go and take it online. So that was the best they could do, I mean, rural Beltrami County are predominantly P O boxes, not physical addresses. So the county itself as a whole was at a, you know, a low response rate. So for us to come in at sixty nine point eight, I consider a success. Despite, you know, all the rest of the numbers probably being higher in.
And our new population, official population is?
We don't know yet.
We don't know.
So for the nine hundreds.
Any questions about that? I just have a slew of dates for you guys.
Yeah.
Some of them are already things we already talked about, sorry. Um, the B D C is meeting this Wednesday, the tenth, um, I'm sorry, I didn't put a time in there, that's eleven A M. Um, on the eleventh, like we stated earlier, is the, the pre-bid meeting at the liquor store. And that's at two P M. Uh, March sixteenth, I named it the Black Duck Library Board and Planning Meeting. Here at six o'clock.
That's gonna be a doozy.
Yeah, I hope it's a really good conversation.
Salutes to that abbreviation.
Yeah. March seventeen is the next chamber meeting, that's at the pond at noon. Um, also on the seventeenth is the next planning commission meeting here at two P M. March twenty second is the scheduled work session for the council that would be here at six o'clock, it's two weeks from tonight. On March twenty fifth, um, the Black Duck Beach, uh, group is gonna meet. Offsite someplace and start thinking of hoping and planning for phase two.
How does one get in touch, just get in touch with Misty or?
Yep.
They wanna make a donation?
Uh, or they, yeah, they can get in touch with Misty or they can, can touch with me. Yep.
And someone asked today, actually.
Um, April first is the bid opening date, um, for the liquor store and that's two P M here at city hall. And then April fifth is the next city council meeting. That's gonna come very quick. And then a reminder absentee balloting has begun, um, that goes through April twelfth. Um, if people aren't registered, they can also register and then also receive their absentee ballot if they wish to do that ahead of time, I've already nailed out two ballots. So, yeah. Does anybody have any questions for me?
We can get new chairs.
I'll get on that tomorrow.
Uh, can I ask for a favor for the council? Um, you know, on the list of the boards, can we get an updated copy sent to our emails?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
For sure.
Of who's on what?
On who's on what, did I not do that after we got the project?
I don't remember.
Okay, I will send it to you guys.
I know, I look back on the.
I gotcha.
Sheldon, did you wanna be the one to attend the development?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Ten eleven.
Yep.
All yours.
Um, Shonda, since I have you here and Mike, but not Jase, we do need to put a personnel meeting together at some point, um. I know, I was hoping Jase was here so we could all discuss a date and a time, I know you have some stuff and Jase has one thing, we need to start working on your stuff too, and I'm talking job descriptions. So.
The Black Duck Beach meeting, was there a time for that?
Uh, our, it's just our group and we're just meeting down at, we're just meeting together at six o'clock that night. On an offsite location.
See how this works. Life's a beach.
So, yes.
So back to the personnel meeting.
I have some stuff.
Um, I guess I would, Jason is our.
Monday, Wednesday, Friday.
Are good.
Are good.
Yeah.
Just Wednesday, I have a, a class at six P M, so.
Okay. So is two o'clock okay?
Uh, what day?
Either one of those days.
Uh, that, that's fine, um, Friday I work at three thirty instead of four thirty, so it's gonna be over an hour and a half.
Okay. So.
Mondays work better.
Mondays work better for you.
This is there.
Just double check what I got in the summer, cause I know Jase is gonna wanna meet. Does March fifteenth at two o'clock work for everybody? Need here?
I'm sure you know.
Okay. Perfect. Awesome. Anything else? Jason would ask for the resolution for the board's assignments, I will get that out to you guys.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything for me? New chairs for Nick.
We need a fill out incident report. Does anybody else, uh, got anything concerns?
Um, the only concern I have is, uh, did the league, uh, extend our Zoom meetings for COVID?
Your, oh, you mean your, um.
So we can not be, be present?
The, you mean for these types of meetings? The league didn't do it, but the state did.
Okay.
Yeah.
I know they were talking about it when she was here last time, she didn't know when it was gonna get extended.
Right.
No, that's the only question I had.
I'd like to note that Jim Anderson is coming up in his ninth.
Nine years?
With us, working at the golf course too. You know, he's not present, but. So a lot of commitment, he started in two thousand twelve.
Well, if that's it, then I have a motion for adjourned.
I made that motion.
Motion of second, all in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.